Good evening. I'd like to call to order the public hearing scheduled for 6:50 PM on special land use for Monday, 12/16/2013 for the 6015 Mayor Monroe Buddhist Temple. Ms. Bettis, can you take the roll, please?
Mayor Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Lynch.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Squires. Councilmember Kerwin.
Here.
Councilmember McCarge.
Here.
Councilmember Sersky.
Here.
Anybody wishing to speak on this public hearing, please come to the podium at this time, state your name. Okay, I'll ask one more time, anybody wishing to speak on the special land use for 6015 Mayor Monroe. Okay, seeing none, I will close that public hearing. We will move into the next public hearing, scheduled for 6:56 PM on the community development block grant transfer of 2010-2011 funds. Ms. Bettis, you take the roll, please.
Mayor Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Lynch.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Squires. Councilmember Kerwin.
Here.
Councilmember McCarge.
Here.
Councilmember Sersky.
Here.
Okay, anybody wishing to speak on this public hearing, please come to the podium at this time, state your name. Okay, well, I ask one more time, anybody wishing to speak on the public hearing for community development block grant transfer of 2010-2011 funds? Okay, seeing none, I will close this public hearing, and we will move into the next public hearing, scheduled for 6:58 PM on the ordinance of illegal transport of marijuana. Ms. Bettis, you take the roll, please.
Mayor Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Lynch.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Squires. Councilmember Kerwin.
Here.
Councilmember McCarge.
Here.
Councilmember Sersky.
Here.
Okay, anybody wishing to speak on this public hearing? This is the illegal transport of marijuana.
I just have a question. There's a lot of medical marijuana. Does this have anything to do with...
This has nothing to do with... This is illegal transport.
Okay, thanks.
Okay? Anybody else? Okay, I will close this public hearing out. We will move into our regular scheduled council meeting, scheduled for Monday, December 16, 2013, at 7:00 PM. We will start off with our opening ceremony, which consists of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those members that have lost their lives while defending our country. Would everybody please stand?
(Music) Oh, say, "And you see, by the Lord's mercy, life, life so gladly be here, and the twilight's last leaving, who's the stripes and bright stars, through the perilous fight, where the dampness be washed, where so gallantly streaming, and the fog is red, and the stars still be there, give to them light, and the panthers still bear. O' spring, the stars shine, and the birds sing, for the land, for the tree, and the whole of the green. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, please be seated. Ms. Bettis, you take the roll, please.
Good evening, Your Honor. Mayor Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Lynch.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Squires. Councilmember Kerwin.
Here.
Councilmember McCarge.
Here.
Councilmember Sersky.
Here.
Sure, Councilmember Squires is absent an excuse. She's probably going to be late, she said.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to item four, approval of the agenda as presented.
Mayor.
Ms. Lynch?
I move for the approval of the Monday, December 16, 2013 agenda.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sersky. Any discussion from the table, from the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch.
Aye.
Councilmember Sersky?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Yes.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires? Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. We'll move on to item five, community events. First one is Community Coalition Youth Award winner, Mike Fair. Is he going to come up, present that?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Excuse me?
It's my pleasure to represent the Garden City Community Coalition this evening, along with Sarah Hurt, who's a longtime Coalition member. The Garden City Community Coalition, with its many partners, including the city, schools, hospital, police, the observer, and local businesses, has a 16-year history of working in Garden City with youth and adults to encourage healthy living without the use and abuse of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. The annual youth awards were started to celebrate outstanding young people who are leaders. During her four-year membership in the rave club, Jessica committed herself to community service and had used her artistic talents to create a contest-winning poster for tobacco prevention. She's also made considerable effort to mentor many of her peers and younger members of the group. We are fortunate to have committed young people like Jessica and are pleased to present her the 2013 award and the $300 Garden City Community Coalition Scholarship.
Jessica Siana. Fantastic job, thank you very much. Okay, next up, we have a certificate of appreciation for Senior Volunteer Committee, Monica Fulton.
Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to recognize some wonderful people tonight. The Senior Volunteer Committee is a group of seniors in our community that volunteer their time not only for the seniors in our community, but also for the children and families in our community. For those of you who may not know, the Senior Volunteer Committee operates a thrift store at the Maplewood Senior Center. They receive donations of clothing and household items all year round, and these items are sold at bargain prices and is available to anyone in the community. The proceeds from the thrift store support senior special events, and the committee always finds a way to help wherever it is needed. Last month, the Senior Volunteer Committee provided free winter coats to families and seniors participating in the Emergency Food Assistance Program at Maplewood Center. With the help from the Commission on Aging, the Volunteer Committee provided over 50 free coats to those in need in our community. A few weeks ago, the Volunteer Committee opened the thrift shop special on a Monday evening and sponsored a holiday shopping event for the children that are enrolled in our junior rave club at the Federal Resource Center. The children were able to choose Christmas gifts for each member of their family for a total cost of $2. The kids were so excited. I'm extremely grateful to the volunteers for making it such a festive and fun occasion for the children on that night. At this time, I'd like to bring Ruth Short up to the podium. Ruth is one of the very dedicated members of the Volunteer Committee. Ruth, I would like to present the Volunteer Committee with the certificate of appreciation for your support of the children and families in Garden City. Thank you for everything you do for us. They work really hard.
I know Ruth, so I can give her a big hug.
Thank you, Mayor, for doing this.
My pleasure.
Perfect. Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, next up, we have City Hall employees donation to the Mayor's UPC and Goodfellows, Allison Bettis.
Your Honor, as you are aware, our employees are part of this community, and they give of their hearts and their salaries to donate to the community in many ways. One of the ways that we do it is anybody that knows me is I'm a stickler for how you dress at work, so I caved and allowed for a Gene Day, much to every... even though it kind of broke my heart. But we allow a Gene Day, but you have to pay for the Gene Day, and those monies are donated to family, usually in Garden City. This year, we decided that there are already some groups out there who do a fantastic job of catering to the needs of needy people in our community. So it's with my pleasure, on behalf of the employees of City Hall, to present checks for $300 each to the Mayor's Committee for Underprivileged Children.
Thank you very much, on behalf of the UPC.
And...
Thank you.
And to the Goodfellows.
Thank you, Ms. Bettis. Okay, we're still under community events. Chief, did you have any community event, recent community event you wanted to speak about?
Nothing I want to talk to you about, thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, if you are looking for events that you might want to announce, who was it that's going to the Rose Bowl?
Ms. Bettis, you're out of line.
Sorry.
Item six, comments from state and county officials. Do we have any? I don't see county commissioner or state representative Kinesik here. Okay. Petitions and communications. Yes, I have a proclamation, 50th wedding anniversary of two of our residents that I'm going to read. City of Garden City, County of Wayne, State of Michigan, proclamation, whereas Jim and Brenda Harper were united in marriage on December 22, 1963, in Kermit, West Virginia, and are now celebrating their 50th wedding anniversary. And whereas this marriage has been blessed with two...
Three.
...with three children, Jimmy, Renee, and Sheri, who received from their parents the kind of happy home life and careful training that develops good citizens and worthy adults. And whereas, in addition to Jim and Brenda's children, they have also been blessed with five grandchildren, Timothy, Crystal, Tucker, Riley, and Reagan. And whereas, in addition to providing for their family a legacy of wit, wisdom, and love throughout the years, Jim has served as pastor of Four Seasons Nursing Home for 18 years, and Brenda has found time to participate in neighborhood activities. And whereas, they have earned the respect of all whom they have come into contact and the love infection of host of friends. And therefore, I, Mayor Walker, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor and behalf of the entire City Council and all of our citizens, do hereby extend to Mr. and Mrs. Harper this expression of our sincere congratulations on this happy occasion. And further, be it resolved that a copy of this proclamation shall be delivered to them with our best wishes for many years of health and happiness together in the years ahead. Congratulations to Mr. and Mrs. Jim Harper for 50 years of marriage. Okay, moving on, public hearings, which we had at the front end. Item nine, consent agenda.
Mayor.
Ms. Lynch?
I move for the approval of the consent agenda, item 9A1 through 3F.
Do we want to read the...
After you get a second.
Okay.
I stuck them.
Second by Councilmember McCarge.
Okay, a couple items that are of note would be the mayoral appointments. We're going to confirm the mayor's appointment of Pat McCarge as the council liaison to the Recreation Commission. Confirmation of the mayor's appointment of Pat McCarge as the alternate to the CDBG Advisory Council. The mayor's appointment of Margot Sersky as the delegate to the CDBG Advisory Council. Confirm the mayor's appointment of Jim Kerwin as the council liaison to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Confirm the mayor's appointment of Pam King as the alternate to the Nankin Transit Commission. Confirm the mayor's appointment of Pam King as the delegate to Southeast Michigan Council of Governments. And to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Ken Hines to the Board of Review with a term to expire 1/1/2017, and Ron Showalter to the Board of Review with the same term.
Okay. Any discussion from the table, from the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch.
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember Sersky?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Moving on to our study session of our agenda, item B1, financial audit for fiscal year ending June 30, 2013. From Plant Moran, we have Dave Helisek. Come up.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. My name's Dave Helisek. I'm with Plant Moran, Michigan State University grad. With me this evening is Michelle Willis. She's a manager with our firm, and we're happy to present the results this evening for the City of Garden City Audit for the year ended June 30, 2013. You should have had in your packet three documents related to the audit this evening. The largest document is the financial statement itself. The second document, you probably haven't seen one of these in a while, the federal program. I'm sorry, yours will have a black cover. And you'll have a federal programs audit, and I'll talk about that briefly. You've got a communication letter, and then finally, the majority of our presentation is the graph that was handed out this evening. Okay? Prior to this evening's meeting, we met with the city manager and clerk treasurer to go over the financial statement, the large document, in great detail, to go over it, basically page by page, fund by fund, to make sure there's a clear understanding of the information that's included in this document, and it's reported accurately based on the results of the financial transactions for the city for the year ended. This is truly the city's document. The only page that really is Plant Moran's is page 1 and 2, so if I can ask you to turn to that page briefly. Again, this is in the large document, you've got the black cover. Pages 1 and 2 is our independent auditor's report or opinion. And even though this looks a little bit different if you're comparing it to the previous year, there were some new auditing standards that were implemented during the current year, so the opinion itself looks a little bit different, but essentially, it's the same result. We were once again able to give the city's financial statements an unqualified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we can give a set of financial statements. What that means is these financial statements, as presented, fairly reflect the financial position of the city for the year ended June 30, 2013, and the change in that financial position. And when I say the change in that financial position, I mean the revenues and expenditures that are recorded within this document, as well as the cash flow statements that are included as well. It's the highest level that we can give a set of financial statements, highest level of assurance. It's one the city strives for on an annual basis. So with this, I'm going to turn it over to Michelle, who's going to cover the graphs briefly. I am going to talk about the federal programs audit and the letter. If you have questions as we go along, feel free to raise your hand, and we'll address them at that time. Thank you.
Okay, like Dave said, you guys should all have a graph packet in front of you. The first slide here is dealing with the general fund, and usually, it's just a one-on-one general fund. Now, this year, this past year, as you know, the city has passed a... or has a dedicated millage for police and fire. Leaving out the police and fire fund would have skewed the way that these graphs look, so we just combined them, so they're presented the way that they normally are. One thing you see here in the four-year trend is after several years of revenue decline, revenue has finally stabilized, and you actually earned $300,000 more this year than the previous year. Now, the majority of that was property taxes. Property tax revenue increased about $800,000 this year. That was due to that police and fire millage. Without that police and fire millage, you would have actually been down another $1 million from last year. Another big source of revenue that you have is the state and federal sources, and that is the state shared revenue. The majority of that is state shared revenue, about $2.5 million of that. It's also grant money from the federal government and from the state. That's down about $400,000 this year, and that's only because last year, you had a really big grant, about $900,000 from the donor funding grant. This year, it was about half of that amount. So overall, your revenue is up 2%. Moving on to the expenditures, your expenditures, like revenue, are up this year. Expenditures are up about 10%. A majority of that is, the net transfers outline item, is about $600,000 higher than last year. And that was a planned transfer out, that was that rubbish fund money that the city was holding on to. It was just transferred to the rubbish fund where it belongs. If you look at the four categories at the bottom, culture and recreation, public service, general government, and public safety, you're going to see some fairly large swings in those. And the reason for that is that this year, the city budgeted the retiree healthcare expense in the individual departments where those costs are incurred. Last year, they were all budgeted to the general government line, and years prior, they were also budgeted to that line. So those swings were because of that. They also increased about $700,000. As we all know, healthcare costs have been going up, so that increased about $700,000. So the net result of all of that is that, on the next slide here, you see that your revenues exceeded your expenditures by about $400,000 this year. That added to your fund balance, and if you look at the line at the bottom here, that's your unassigned fund balance. And this year's fund balance, unassigned, is 3.7, almost $3.8 million. And that's about 23% of your annual expenditures in the general and public safety funds combined.
What'd you say, 23%?
23... It's 23.2%.
Thank you.
And that's the two funds combined. So moving on to the next slide, that fund balance number that I had mentioned, you see a four-year trend of the fund balance, and then you see that this year, again, you added a little over $300,000 to that. The one thing you'll notice in this graph is that that blue box, the restricted money, is gone. And that was because everything that was in that restricted money was the rubbish fund that was transferred, or rubbish money that was transferred to the rubbish fund. And of this fund balance, the $111,000, that's mainly prepaid expenses, so it's money you've already set aside, or sent out. Obviously, you can't spend money that you've already spent. Okay? That's all about the general fund and the public safety fund. The next slide covers your water and sewer fund. And as you see here, revenue is up about 10% this year. That's about $1 million. And expenditures are up about $1.3 million, and that's 19% increase in expenditures. Overall, your working capital is up $1.4 million to $9.3 million. And of that $9.3 million, about $500,000 represents accounts receivable, so that's money that your customers still owe you, and it could take anywhere from one to nine months to collect.
What is that amount?
I'm sorry, what?
What is that amount?
The $5 million?
No, no. What are we owed?
What are you owed from your customers?
Yes.
It's about $5.2 million right now at year end. And part of it is just, it's money that you've built, part of it's money that hasn't been built yet, that you used but not built.
Another question.
Sure.
How do we go from... This is unbelievable. I looked at this all weekend. In fact, I talked to Ms. Bettis today. But how do we go from 4.8 million to 8.6 million on our operating expenses? Isn't that four, five million dollars?
So there are several factors. I mean, obviously, the cost of water is in there, all of your operating costs, retiree healthcare, we all know that that's a portion of it.
If you just the operating expenses, that's $4 million. What, I mean, that's not good enough for me. How the hell do we come up with an extra $4 million? What's going on?
I'm sure we can get you the trend, what's in the four years, or Allison, I know she has that handy.
This is, I think it's crazy. And then the revenue's gone from eight and a half million to over $11 million. Extra expenses have gone from 4.8 to 8.6. How?
It's just the cost, the cost of the water, the cost of retiree healthcare, cost of benefits.
I'd like to see something, a kind of a breakdown, because I don't know how that makes $4 million out.
Either we can get you that, or Allison has that information handy, too. Either way, we can get that to you.
Seems like an awful lot to me, but...
But in 2010, retiree healthcare wasn't coming out of the water fund, correct?
That is correct.
That is correct. That was just coming out of the general fund, so now we're showing... $711. It was, yep, that is correct.
I'd still like to see the breakdown on that. Can I ask a question? Would this be all the new water mains we... the cost of all then for BAC, for ladders?
You know, I'm not sure...
That comes out of the water fund?
It does, but...
The portion of it, that, the portion of it that is attributed, so any replacement that we did as a result of the roadwork, that portion of it comes out of the water and sewer fund, yes.
So would that be why this is so...
That's part of it, yes.
Yeah, okay.
But I'd be happy to show you the breakdown.
Yeah, I'd really like to see it.
At any time.
Yeah. We've done more in the past couple of years.
Yeah, we've done more roadwork in the last few years, so I'm thinking that that's what a big part of this is, is all the new water mains on the streets that we've been building. No, I understand it's going to be marked, but with $4 million, I'd really like to see it.
Sure.
Thanks, Michelle. If I could ask you to turn to, just briefly, the document that's titled "Federal Awards", so small financial statement. This is one that the city only sees every so many years. It's actually few and far between. So any year that the city spends over $0.5 million in federal monies, you're required to have a separate 133 compliance audit. So if you were to look through this document, you would note that there was over $300,000 that was received/spent of federal monies for the fire truck purchase. That in and of itself, it obviously doesn't reach its $500,000 threshold, but you've got some other costs in there, some block grant costs, and some other... We did. We had one major program, which was the fire truck purchase. So as a result of that, we found no issues of noncompliance or weaknesses related to the purchase of that truck or that major program in and of itself. The only other thing I'd like to point to you in the, in the document itself is on page nine. So historically, when we would have an internal control item to communicate, it would be in our letters, our letter of required communication to those charged of governance. And we've got one, we've got a federal programs audit, we actually put the communication in this document. So you'll see on page nine, we do have material weakness for the year, and it relates to some journal entries. And really what that means is there were some journal entries as a result of the audit that were required to report the financial statements in accordance with GAAP. It's not unusual for a city, towns, or village, even counties, to have this type of finding. You think of thousands of transactions that are run through the city on an annual basis. You couple that with some of the accounting that needs to be done at year-end related to accruals and revenue recognition, it really isn't unusual to see this, this type of finding. What, what I can say is the, the numbers, I'm sorry, the journal entries that, that came up, the result in this finding, will really relate to more cutoff items around the year-end, so they really wouldn't have had an impact on any information that was received by this council throughout the year. So that's the type of journal entries actually you want. It's more of wrapping the stuff up at year-end, because for the most part, you're operating on a cash basis throughout, throughout the year, and then you've got your accruals at the end of the year. So, again, that's, it was just one finding, it was related to journal entries, but again, the information that you have in the large financial report does actually reflect the activity of the city at the year-end, June 2013. Okay. Then the last item, you know, it's, it's an 18-page document, and it's a required communication to council, and it's really broken up into three, three different sections. So I don't think this, does this one have it covered?
No, it doesn't.
It's probably the only one it doesn't have it covered. What used to be four sessions, sections is now three, because we put the one in the, in the federal programs audit. But there's a required communication relating to the audit process itself. So, so those of you who are novice at the beginning of the audit process, you would have received a communication from, from Plamaran indicating our, our audit approach, what we deemed to be the risky areas, how we were going to address the risky areas of the audit, and gave you each the opportunity to actually contact us and let us know if you had any concerns with anything financially that might have occurred in the past year, and if you'd like to direct some of our attention to any specific area, so we can incorporate, you know, those thoughts, tailor out our audit approach, and address any concerns that you may have. This letter basically brings you back full circle, and it, it explains what, what we did and what we found. And, and really, what you're hoping for is this to be as plain and vanilla communication as, as we can issue, and, and that's what, exactly what you got. You're really looking for exceptions in this report, and if you go through it, and it's only pages three, four, and five, sorry, three, four, and five, you'll see that there's nothing really that, that would come to your attention that, that would say, hey, we had a problem, a specific problem with the way the audit went. If we had a, a, a significant problem, to be honest, we wouldn't be waiting until this time to have that communication with council. We would have addressed each and every one of you at the time that that issue came up, would have made you aware of it, would have talked about our approach, and would have asked you for direction on that as well. So this is what you're hoping for, and, and that's what you got as far as that communication. In section two on page six, these are some other recommendations, and these are really just items that come up during the course of the audit that are not weaknesses, are not deficiencies, are just items that come to our attention, that we talk about with finance, and we're just making sure that council's aware of these things as well. The outstanding checklist is, is probably something we talk with all of our clients about, just reminding them to, you know, if they get over a year old, consider reissuing or shooting those items, because it, it just makes the outstanding list a little bit longer every month for the, for the person who has to prepare those recommendations. Fund deficits, you did have a few fund deficits. At the end of the year, you'll be required to have a communication with the state, but this kind of, this second paragraph just really deals with how those would be corrected. For the most part, it's just revenue recognition. You can only, you can only recognize revenue if it's collected within 60 days of year-end. So if you're incurring expenses, for instance, on a special assessment, and you're expected to receive those monies over a period of time, you'll show a deficit, however your deficit elimination plan is, here's our receivable, we're going to get the money as, as anticipated. The block grant, you know, again, a, a, you know, a timing issue, but we mentioned in the, in the third item, that, you know, well, we noticed that there hadn't been a draw made during the 2012, 2013 year, and we had, the city had receivable, actually, from last year. You know, while not a weakness and, or a deficiency, you always get concerned on whether or not that block grant money could actually be pulled back and not be available to the city. So you really want to try to stay up on that as best as you can, as far as requesting those draws. So just wanted to make sure we communicated that. And then finally, section three, the legislative and information, informational items, a lot of information here, I just want to touch on, on probably the most significant ones, and that really is, beginning on page eight, when we're talking about the revenue sharing. So as you know, a couple of years ago, the statutory revenue sharing was replaced by the EBIT program, which is the Economic Vitality Incentive Program, and it wasn't replaced dollar for dollar, it was at a reduction. But to, to receive those monies, the city has to comply with certain aspects of, of the program, and then you receive your program out of shares. I've listed the categories on page eight. Category one is accountability and transparency, that was due October 1st. The city turns, you know, turns in that information that allows you to get your October 31st and December 31st EBIT payments. The second category is the consolidation of services, due on February 1st, and that will, when it's filed, it'll give you your February and your April EBIT payments. Now, keep in mind, this is the one that you have every year, where you're talking about past efforts and how, what savings were derived from those, from those cooperation or collaborative agreements, and it's asking for at least one more new initiative, and, and how that might, you know, save the, the city some, some monies. So that will be due on February 1st. The final one, category three, is the one that changes, it seems like every year, more significantly, again, so this is year three, category three changes significantly every year. It, it still is focused on post-employment benefits, but the approach this year is, is a listing of all the actions that have been taken historically to reduce the unfunded liability. The unfunded liability is the difference between the actuarial liability of the benefits that have been promised versus the monies that have been set aside. It asks for a detailed plan on how previous actions will continue to be implemented and maintained, and it asks for an additional list of items that, that the city could implement to, to reduce that liability, and again, in curse of savings. So it, a little bit different than it had been in the past, I think there's going to be a lot of writing on this one, and a lot of examples. Again, due June 1st, so you can get your June and your August EBIT payments. Nine, personal property tax, I'm sorry, at the bottom of page nine, I guess, most of page nine, personal property tax. Big election coming up in August of 2014, it's really going to say what the direction the state is going to take on personal property taxes. If this ballot passes, personal property taxes will be phased out beginning in 2016. If it does not pass, it will, at least for the time being, be business as, as usual. The only thing that is, is for certain, if you take a look at this, you know, first paragraph is affects the July 1st, 2014 tax levy. So personal property taxes on parcels that have true cash values of less than $80,000 or taxable values of under $40,000 will not be taxed on July 1st, 2014. It's essentially going to be pulled off of the tax roll. If the August 14 language passes, it will be off permanent, because personal property tax is going to go away. If the, the ballot language doesn't pass and it's business as usual and the personal property, you will not be, at least the, the language right now, you will not be recovering this July 1st levy. It's gone for good. So that, that July 1st levy, regardless of what happens in the, the election in 2014, at the time being, it, it's lost revenues. If the language passes, now, the bigger picture is, relates to the personal property taxes. The replacement is coming from a separate authority set outside of Michigan Treasury. It's going to be funded by use tax tied to the ballot language, as well as some monies from some expiring, some expiring battery credits. The discussion is right now is it would reimburse communities, qualifying communities up to 80% of that personal property tax. So that would kind of be a best-case scenario right now. That's what the language says. They haven't finished addressing how it would affect DDAs, for instance, you know, which would obviously be very important to the city, as we've got a Tiff district that we're capturing. So what we try to do is we get the information out, and try to, to distribute it to the city soon as, soon as we can, with our thoughts and comments on that, on, on what that language is saying. We've got some more information on retro pay, emergency manager, deficit elimination plans, the, the city will be using this, it's just a, a new way of reporting your deficit elimination plans to the state of Michigan. Page 11 talks about, gives some information on OPEP bonding, so there's been some communities, and this isn't a, a commercial to say, do it or don't do it, but just so you're aware, there's some communities that have actually issued debt to fund their, their post-retirement healthcare, and are making the debt service on, on that. This is a little discussion on how that process, what set up that process, and, you know, we'd be happy, Michelle and I would be happy to talk about that, if that's something that the, the city would be interested in. Twelve, page 12 is really more administrative, and then the last one on 13 is a late add, actually, we just got this information, I say late, probably about a month and a half ago, when there is a nice notice that came from MDOT, I believe, or it came from transportation, Allison?
Yes.
Reminding folks that there was some, an act passed that tied benefits to Act 51 monies. The way we read it currently is if you're complying with Public Act 152, 2011, you still comply under the, the Act 51 monies, but that is something that gets addressed by the legislature, legislators every year. So that's something we'll have to keep an eye on to see if, if, if that changes or not, but that's some good information, but we consider some good late information, it's about a month old. So with that, is there any questions on anything that Michelle or I covered, or anything that we didn't cover that you'd like further clarification on?
Anyway, from council, have anything?
Thank you.
Thank you. As always, there's a lot of information here. Michelle and I are always available to discuss it one-on-one on one or a small group, either through the parish treasurer or the city manager's office. Just contact us, and we'd be happy to meet you. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item two in our study session, special land use for 6015 Mayor Monroe.
C.
C. Item three, community development block, block grant transfer?
C.
C. Item four, the ordinance on illegal transport of marijuana?
C.
Item five, proposed ordinance adopting the building code?
C.
Okay. Item six, request for purchase service credit?
C.
And item seven, Wayne County annual permits, A, B, and C.
C.
Item eight, Florence Avenue reconstruction. Do you want some discussion on this? I know I would like some. DPS director, would you like, Veroni?
Good evening.
This is Florence between-
Harrison and Inkster Road.
Inkster Road is what you want to rebuild for 2014.
Yes, and this is an item to get funding for the engineer to get out there and get started in the next couple of weeks, gathering or surveying data, and the background utility information to enable them to complete the design, so we can get the job bid out earlier in the year.
Okay. And on our road ratings that we have, this is one of our worst roads that we need to address now?
Correct, that's the next one in line for reconstruction.
And is there any more that we plan on doing in 2014? Any other streets?
I anticipate yes, however, I am working with Hennessy now, over the next several weeks, to make sure we're totally in agreement on which road that would be.
So right now, we're just talking Florence?
This is just Florence, we'll come back for the other road.
Okay.
As well as the remainder of the engineering services for Florence.
Any other questions from council?
I just have a, excuse me, a statement, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Veroni, for being on the ball, so we don't have to finish this thing up, or it just flies next year. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, C.
C.
Okay, item nine, the five-year capital improvement plan. This, my understanding, talking to Ms. Bettis, is just to give us time to digest, to receive note, and review. More discussion to follow on this. We've already started with the City Hall roof, the Zamboni, the person in the police car, those were in our five-year capital improvements. So this is just for us to, to receive it tonight, and more to follow.
And I'm assuming, Mayor, at our budget meetings, this is something we'll be discussing?
Yes, absolutely.
C.
Item 10, supplemental appropriation, National League of Cities Grant Funds.
C.
C. And item 11, bid award for low-emissive ceiling project. Dan, come on, want to come up and explain to council what, what you'd like to do here?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In your packet is a copy of the RFP that was sent out for low-emissive, we call it low-E ceiling, project at the ice arena. The current ceiling is in a condition right now where, where essentially, there's no, there's no ceiling underneath the insulation, there's nothing that traps the, the cold air, or better yet, the warm air, when we're trying to keep the building warm. Having a low-E ceiling in most municipal ice rinks is just as essential as having a Zamboni or an Olympia. So our low-E ceiling that we did have was taken down back in September of 2012 by the DPS. That was about 15 to 20 years aged, in very poor condition, not insulating the building to the job that it's designed to do, and aside from the aesthetics of it, it wasn't doing the job essentially of what it does. And a low-E, a low-E ceiling's number-one job is to save energy costs, it's to save money. It's to keep the temperature at a set point, whether it be a desired cold temperature or a desired warm temperature. So what I'm requesting of council, and it's what's in the packet tonight, is we, through the Parks and Rec Commission, and through the Wayne County Commissioner's Office, we have dedicated $21,500 in Wayne County Parks Millage Funds towards this project. We've done an energy audit on our compressors through an outside contractor, where they essentially come in and, and meter the compressors to see how they function. And we've qualified for a rebate through Detroit Edison for $4,900. And what we're, we put the bid, we put the job out for bid with the direction of the city manager, through some conversations he and I have had, to see what kind of response we've got. And what we've got is a product that I feel is, in, in a class of its own, it's, it's a step above the past product that we've had, and I brought a sample of that tonight, I'd like to pass around and show everybody. But it does require a subsidy from the general fund, so I'm, I'm here asking Mayor and Council tonight to support this project, and, and knowing that the return on this investment is about seven years, we'll make our money back in seven years. We'll save about 25% annually on our energy costs, which is about $10,000 to $11,000 a year. Our compressors are fully- Our compressors are 40 years old, so it's a good investment. It's as essential as having a Zamboni, and it's essential as the compressor's operating is having a good ceiling. And we've, the company that has come in is the, one of the three bids, has got a firsthand knowledge of the building. They've looked at it. They've come in and looked at our aesthetics and made sure that they can give us the best bid and the best price that they can give us. So I did include some pictures for you of basically some references. There should be a packet on everybody's desk. If you have a chance to flip through it, there are basically some before and after pictures. And the main, the main improvements, aside from cost, it's going to improve our energy efficiency, our lighting, it's going to improve lighting in the building by 40 percent. It's going to improve acoustics. I know Dan York, who was calling the guns and hoses game last Saturday night, would appreciate that. And overall, it's a win-win, and it does cost money, but we will save money over time. So with that, I'd like to pass around a couple of samples. This is the main sample right here. This is called Astro Rank material, and it's a thick insulated sheet of insulation, you know, with a reflective material. And it's going to be mounted to the ceiling. It won't be suspended down on cables like the old system was. It'll have a galvanized steel, was my turn, I thought, anyway, to be affixed to the ceiling.
You channel.
You channel. Thank you. So anyway, I'd like to pass this around just so council could see it. This is from the company called Energy Innovations that we, that I'm here recommending approval for tonight. And we did receive two other bids, and I'd like to pass around one sample of the other two bids. The third company did not send a sample, but I'd like to just show it. This is the other sample. I think I put this over my muffins tonight in the oven, so it's pretty thin.
And Dan, let me say something. Dan was showing me this at the guns and hoses game the other night. The hockey pucks do go up to the ceiling, and they'll go right through that sample. This one, I was throwing hockey pucks off of that, and it just bounces off. So there's more insulation in that, it's going to save us more energy. That's going to rip like aluminum foil.
And this is also warranted or guaranteed?
You get what you pay for, is what I'm trying to say.
And one thing I would like to add, the warranty on that product, the thicker of the two, is lifetime.
And where the others is ten or five.
And this is five years.
That's five.
It won't last more than four.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, Mr. Plomond had mentioned that this was general fund. Part of the money was taken from the general fund. It's actually coming from contingency, that fund that we set aside at the beginning of the year for little surprises, and it's just one of our little surprises. We felt whenever we see an opportunity to leverage city money, in this case, we're picking up $4,900 in support from DTE. When we see an opportunity like that, we try to take advantage of it if it's reasonable. I wish it came back time a little quicker, but the difference is, I think that this product is an outstanding investment, just the change, besides what it will do for insulation purposes. The change in the aesthetics, the appearance of the length are phenomenal, as you can tell from these pictures.
Well, the 25 percent energy savings is huge, too. Anybody got any questions?
I got a question just off the top. How many hours of ice are rented each week offhand? Do you know?
Oh, boy. Well, we rent ice seven days a week. During the week, we rent ice as early as 5:00 PM, as late as 1:00 AM. On Saturdays, we're up at 9:00 AM and down by 11:00 PM. Sundays, we're up by 12:00 or 1:00 and down by 9:00 PM.
Quite a few.
I'm sorry?
Quite a few.
Quite a few.
Yeah. Thank you.
One of the reasons why I think we're rented as much as we are is Dan does a lot of hustling as far as calls, emails, when he sees ice down. I mean, I know that hasn't changed in the last couple of years, so it's being utilized because of staff and the work they do.
Ms. Squire?
I see nothing but positive going forward in taking care of what we've got and with other grants that are coming in. And with that, could that create more teams coming in possibly? You know, with a better facility, you know, that's a little more in keeping with the other communities.
In my opinion, you know, from the customer's perspective, aesthetics goes a long way. You know, we put the doors in at the Ice Arena back in, what year was it, 2007, 2008?
It's been a while, yeah.
We still get people coming in saying, oh, my goodness, what wonderful doors you have, and how wonderful the lights are. And that was done three, four years ago. You know, good ice and an energy-conscious building, the customers don't realize that as much. It's the aesthetics. They notice a Zamboni, they notice a clean building, they notice a new ceiling, they notice new lighting. Those are the things that get your customers saying, you know what, they're reinvesting in the Ice Arena. I feel my dollars being well spent.
Go ahead.
The money the city spent on the lighting has actually, we've had a return on that, haven't we?
Very quickly.
Yeah, very quickly.
Yeah, that entire project was less than $5,000 to relight the whole building, and that was a, that was a good investment.
And what I was going to say, you get that grant money, we're going to be building more locker rooms at the Ice Ring this year with the grant money, which allow more tournaments to come to our city, Ice Ring, more use, the doors, the ceiling, the new Zamboni, it's going to, it's going to bring in revenue. Carriage City Ice Ring is going to be a place where people are going to want to come and play hockey, figure skating.
So that's our plan.
Yep.
And there's a parking lot we're going to have to talk about.
We're waiting for Monica or Dan to write a grant for a parking lot.
We're working on it now.
Thank you, Mr. Plomond.
Thank you.
Okay, C.
C.
Okay, we will move on to the C portion of our agenda. First item is C2, special land use for 6015 Merriman. Let everybody jump at once.
Wait, wait, wait. Got to reshuffle our papers.
Mayor?
Ms. Lynch?
I move to approve the special land use for a religious institution at property identified as 6015 Merriman Road.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Sisarski. Any discussion from the table?
Yes. I have, yes. I have a question regarding this, only because it's a home, it's an actual home, and to take this out of being a residential home, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct?
Turn here.
Okay, to take it from being a home and putting it into a facility such as that, and I'm not against it in the sense of what it means, but now there are no taxes that we would receive from this because of that. Okay, now, down the road, I know we do have the parish, okay, but that also has a church with it. Is there going to be a Buddhist temple, or is this all there is?
This, how, they certainly hope to expand in the future. That's their grand wish. Currently, I believe, they have nine members. And they, they bring in someone from the West Coast who holds services. But right now, the house is what they're going to use, and until they expand their membership, that's, but they have bought the vacant lot, just north of it, that also belongs to them.
Okay, okay.
They're doing some improvements also as a result of this. There are sidewalks that currently don't exist that they will hopefully be filling in. That was part of the instructions from the planning commission. But this is, this is a very low-impact usage, minimal changes to accommodate the parking because of their low membership. There is not someone living in the house during off times. It is different.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else from the table, from the general public?
Good evening. Which side is the street? Which way is that? I have to decide driver's side, we go on the door. Which side is that? The street, the address.
West side.
Driver's side.
Huh?
Driver's side.
What?
Driver's side, the west side, driver's side.
I couldn't find it, the address. I looked, I drove down that way. I couldn't find him.
It's on Merriman, 6015 Merriman.
Where? I lost it somewhere.
It's there.
It's there.
Anybody else? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Sisarski?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Item two, community development block grant transfer.
Mayor?
Mrs. King?
To call for required public hearing number two for Monday, January 13, 2014, at 7:00 PM, to consider the transfer of 2010 and 2011 CDBG funds and the creation of a new project funded through replacement of a portion of the Maplewood Center roof and to direct administration to publish and post the required public notice of the hearing pursuant to Wayne County rules, minimum 10 days prior to hearing.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Discussion from the table, from the general public. Ms. Bettis?
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember King?
Oh, I've tried to see it.
Yes, no, I'd just like to put in there that Maplewood Center is in dire, dire need of having something like this done. I mean, I've met with a few of the department heads around here, and it's amazing what everybody is doing with what little funds they have, quite honestly. That being said, this is something that is highly needed. We have the library in there, we have the seniors in there, we have classes in there for dancing. I think it's quite evident that we do need to go through with this. That's my take on it.
Okay, anybody else?
This is a project, Mr. Mayor, I can add, we expect to have done by May 15, I believe, or early April 25th of 2014. It's something we've been looking at for a long time. We saw an opportunity, the search presence, the presentation from Plan Moran, we saw an opportunity to reprogram some unspent funds to go toward this. The total roof project, I think, is estimated at $130,000, and the city will ultimately be asked to come up with $16,000. And that's, we're figuring everything on the high end so that we don't come in on the budget. City will be asked to come up with $16,000. The rest of that will be money we're utilizing from other sources and leveraging our money.
Anybody else from the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember Sisarski?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Item C4, ordinance illegal transport of marijuana.
Mayor?
Ms. Lynch?
I move to adopt the attached ordinance prohibiting the illegal transportation of marijuana in a moving vehicle or boat.
Seconded by Mrs. King. Discussion from the table, from the general public. Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Sisarski?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Item C5, adoption of the building code ordinance.
Mayor?
Ms. Squires?
I move to introduce proposed ordinance amendment to 151.01, adoption of building code by reference to require that the city enforce the most current edition of the International Property Maintenance Code and call for a public hearing on January 13, 2014, at 6:52 PM.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Sisarski. Discussion from the table, from the general public. Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember Sisarski?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Item C6, request of purchase service credit.
Mayor?
Mrs. King?
To approve the purchase of municipal employee's retirement system, MERS, service credit of five years by Patrick M. Schneider in accordance with the application for additional credited service dated December 1, 2013, and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents related to this application.
Support.
Support from Councilmember McCarge. Discussion from the table, from the general public. Mr. General, come up to the podium, please.
Mike Jones, I just have a question on where he works. Police department.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember Sisarski?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Item C7, the Wayne County annual permits, A, B, and C. Can we do them as one, or do we got to do them individual?
I do believe that they all have separate motions, and so you need to do them separately.
All right, well, let's do A then, special events. Mrs. Lynch?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing execution of annual special events permit as contained in proposed permit number A-14138.
Support from Councilmember King. Discussion from the table. Sisarski?
Mr. Veroni, can you just make sure on all three of the applications before you submit them that you change the name to your name and take off Jeff Barnes, because it looks like he is...
Oh, certainly, yes, absolutely.
Is the contact person. That's all I have.
Anybody else from the table, from the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Sisarski?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Item 7B, maintenance calendar year 2014.
Mayor?
Ms. Squires?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing execution of annual maintenance permit as contained in proposed permit number A-14050.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. Discussion from the table, from the general public. Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Sisarski?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Item 7C, pavement restoration for calendar year 2014. Mayor? Mr. Kerwin?
Move to approve the resolution authorizing the execution of annual pavement restoration permit as contained, proposed permit number A-14105.
Support.
Support from Councilmember McCarge. Discussion from the table, from the general public.
Can you reach across the floor and speak?
No.
It's just a permit to do any streets.
Thank you, Ms. Bettis. Anybody else? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember Sisarski?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Item C eight, Florence Avenue reconstruction.
Mayor.
Councilmember Lynch?
I move to approve retaining Hennessy Engineering Incorporated for the geotechnical and topographical work in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars for the Florence Avenue reconstruction project.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Discussion from the table. From the general public.
Florence Street, can I get mine without?
This is for the engineering to redo Florence from Inkster to Harrison.
Yeah, how about my in a town? My street looks like a dick.
This is just on Florence right now, Mr. Baco.
You got money to spend, huh?
Mr. Baco, this is only about Florence. We're not talking about your street right now. This is just about Florence. Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember Sisarski?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Item C nine, five-year capital improvement.
Mayor.
Councilmember McCarge?
To approve, to receive, to receive the proposed five-year capital improvement program two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and nineteen pursuant to Garden City Charter six dash oh five A.
Support.
Support from Mrs. King. Discussion from the table. From the general public. Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Sisarski?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Item C ten, supplemental appropriation.
Mayor.
Mrs. Squires?
Sisarski.
I know.
I gotta learn your voices.
Um, I'd like to approve a supplemental appropriation in the amount of twenty-eight thousand to reflect the additional revenue and expenditures pertaining to the grant received from the National League of Cities.
Support.
Support from Mrs. King. Discussion from the table. From the general public. Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Sisarski?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Item C eleven, bid award for low-emittive ceiling at the ice rink.
Mayor.
Mrs. McCarge.
Long time coming. To approve the bid award for the low-emission ceiling project at the Civic Arena to Energy Innovation Incorporated of Saint Laurent, Quebec, Canada, in the amount of fifty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, and to authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Support.
You guys are driving me crazy. Support, uh...
It's just started, Mayor.
Support by Councilmember Lynch. Discussion from the table. From the general public. Mr. Wallace?
It's good we're improving the building, but I have a question. What portion of the cities, the citizens of Garden City uses that to the outsiders? Uh, does anybody have any record? Because the cosmetics of that building, when I first came here, the kids had to go up in Henry and skate outside, and that's terrible. But I would like to know, are we supporting for the youth and the people of our city, or is this just a money-making project for outsiders? Who uses the facility the most, the Garden City residents or outsiders? Does anybody have any kind of record on that? I would appreciate it.
Not about the percentage, but I can tell you Garden City residents use that ice rink.
I, I, some of them do, but where's the majority coming from is what I'm asking. You've got to remember, the city is a nonprofit organization, all right? And if it's not for the benefit of the majority of the citizens in Garden City, I don't, I don't agree with it. That's my personal opinion. The outside hasn't been painted in thirty years of that building. It's cinder block. It's going to deteriorate. The thing's going to fall off.
Thank you. Mr. Plamon?
Obviously, I don't have that number right here, but just to give some information to council, our current ice schedule right now, we have our men's over thirty hockey league, which has been around for a long time in Garden City, primarily Garden City residents. Uh, we have the Garden City Figure Skating Club. We have the Garden City Hockey Association. We have a new Sunday night, nineteen-and-over men's adult hockey league. Um, all teams, all eight teams have signed up, all managers from those teams, all Garden City residents. We do have outside, we do have outside teams that skate in Garden City. Uh, we, we had to adapt to the decline with youth hockey. Uh, this community was hit very hard, and youth hockey went on a decline. I'm sure Mr. Kerwin can attest to that with his days, going back to GCYA. Uh, we don't have a strong youth hockey base like we used to, but we are building our way back up. Um, we have opened the doors for outside groups that, that come in and rent ice from us, but we always make sure that our, our primary resident user groups get first choice on ice time. And, uh, and I think most groups that use the building would agree with that. I just want to make sure council's aware of that.
Good point.
And, and we do have non-residents that come through our city and eat in our restaurants, use our, our facilities. I mean, anytime you take grant money from the federal government, it's gotta be for all people. So, uh, I prefer the ice rink being used and being boarded up, so, uh, it's, it's well, well-spent money. It's an enhancement to, to our city and to our park system. Anybody else from the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Sisarski?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. At this time, we will move on to item ten, which is public comments that were not on the agenda tonight. If you wish to speak, please come up to the podium and state your name. There is a five-minute time limit. Uh, Councilmember Sisarski will be the timekeeper. She'll let you know when you have thirty seconds left. Again, this is your opportunity to make a comment or a statement. It is not the time to engage back and forth with councilmembers. Anybody wishing to speak? Yes, Mayor.
Samantha Baker. Nina Sue Cross.
I'm Gloria Murningham.
We are here as part of the Garden City Figure Skating Club, with, which I am president, in regards to our annual skating competition. For the past thirty-four years, we have held an annual figure skating competition at the Garden City Ice Rink. This competition draws skaters from all over the state to our city. These skaters support businesses in our city, such as restaurants and stores. According to the approved fee schedule, the Figure Skating Club is to pay twelve percent of our registration fees to the rink as payment for our competition weekend. The competition is our biggest fundraiser, bringing approximately four thousand dollars, which we use to operate our Learn to Skate program for our community. This year, we are being asked to pay forty-five hundred to five thousand dollars to use the rink for our competition. Paying this amount will bankrupt the Garden City Figure Skating Club. We will cease to exist. In hopes of keeping our club alive, we have been considering holding the Garden City competition at another skating rink, which has already agreed to a lower price. We would hate to see our competition leave our city. We believe it is a chance to show with pride our city and our rink to others and also bring money to our local businesses. We are asking the council to accept twelve percent of our registrations as payment for use of the rink for our competition, to be held March seventh through the ninth, two thousand and fourteen. While we understand that we, rink is under pressure to break even financially, paying more will be the end of our club. Thank you for our consideration.
Thank you. We'll look into it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Wallace?
Buddy Wallace. I want to mention the fact we got quite a few phone calls, and we have a new councilperson that really does, does her homework, and everybody was calling and thanking her for... A lot of senior citizens worried about the people that come up here about the meters. And previously, about five weeks before the last group came up, there was four or five people came. Nobody ever even said anything about the residents. They were all beginning to get worried. And thank you, Mrs. Council Lady King, for looking into it and relieving some of the people. Seniors get real excited about that, and I can understand why. I want to always thank the police, the, the great, greatest police around us in the area. But a lot of times, we don't recognize a good person and an important person in our community. And that is the court system and Mayor, I mean Judge Hammer. His family's been around long years. One of the most important parts of the police, if you arrest them and everything, they don't get, uh, detention or the right judge, they're going to be back out on the street doing the same crime again. And I'd like to give Judge Hammer and his predecessor, his father, a lot of credit for keeping Garden City a good place to live in, a good place to call home. And thank you very much. And by the way, Mr. Walker, businesses aren't supported by the public in our, in my pocket for taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Mr. Baco?
I committed a small mistake, partner. Please take it. I get all, all, all my card. It's bad. I was there fifty-eight. So, I stand on the, on the, on the pocket lot. I was sick, and I'm going to kill myself tonight. And my street, they started last night, and I got out to Sporly and looked, full snow. I go, go ice skating at a road, they, they started one, and ducked like a cat. I just trusted with the skin. They didn't help nobody. My street looked like a, like a disaster. They don't care about that. As I was money, my street is terrible. They started, and it went apart. Like, pulled out the Sporly, get it out. But, but, I got to the feet eight. My street is a disaster. I'm sorry about the skin. Why live in the skinny, but you don't care about the rest at all? No way. As I was just, it did yesterday, it's just his money. South Coast, Comaster, it's terrible. Today, I'm changing the city. I really am. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baco. Anybody else? Mr. Farron?
Thank you, Mayor. I did not realize that the Garden City Figure Skating Club would be speaking to you this evening. But as former president of the club for seven years, I am greatly distressed by the fact that we may not have a competition here in Garden City this year. I think that will be a disgrace to the council and to the recreation supervisor if something can't be worked out to keep that competition here in Garden City. The Garden City Figure Skating Club has trained thousands of skaters over the years and enabled them to enjoy a lifetime of enjoyment on the ice. We've had fabulous coaches here. We've turned out wonderful skaters. The club has its ups and downs, and it's not at its peak right now, membership-wise. But we need to support it, and they need to be able to make some money on this competition in order to exist and to continue to train skaters in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farron. Anybody else? Okay, we will move on to city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. Council, first, to address the figure skating issue. I didn't know there was an issue until six seventeen tonight, when the Figure Skating Club alerted me that they'd be appearing to discuss a problem. I had no idea there was a problem. The cost that they've been told they're going to pay is based on the time, the ice time that will be lost, the time that would have generated revenue. So that's what their expense is, is based on the revenue that the ice would have generated. That is pursuant to council's directive to Mr. Plamon, that at the ice arena, that he will operate a break-even operation. Now, certainly, if council wants to say tonight, and let me be further on this, because I didn't know there was twelve percent in the fee schedule later, until about six forty-five tonight. So this is all kind of flung on me at the last moment. But if council wants to get, to make, give the directive tonight, that twelve percent is twelve percent, and that's what we're sticking to, that, because we seem to have sort of two conflicting policies here. We have, that's certainly the direction we can go in, but we need to recognize that Mr. Plamon, who calculated this fee based on lost revenue, may not necessarily have a break-even operation as a result. I don't know if council wants to think about this, or if council just wants to say, nope, twelve percent.
I think we should think about it.
I think if you brought us back all of the facts so that we could see it on the back and white, we'd be able to make a decision.
I'd like to get them right and have them stay here, but I, I'm going to, you know.
Right.
And this is very similar to some of the issues that we have run into with the GCYA and having to charge them, and still, the hockey, I'm sorry, the soccer club. Uh, we don't like it. We find it somewhat distasteful, but, you know, we're, we're just now in the recovery stages, initial recovery stages of that, of that financial disaster that we were facing. And as, as I said, Mr. Plamon is operating under his last directive from city council, which was a break-even operation.
How about this, how about we have it on our study session for the first meeting in January? Give us some facts so we can discuss it, because they're talking March seventh through March ninth, so we got time. If we could put it on our, on our January study session and, and hopefully make it, hopefully make a decision that night.
That, that'll be fine. Mr. Plamon has that information to his fingertips. We'll put it together and we'll get it.
Mr. Plamon?
No, it's not really enough time.
And that's what I was just gonna mention.
We need all our announcements to the figure skating community, if we'll be having it here or if we'll be having it in Melvinale.
Yeah, in, in, in all consideration, the club needs to advertise a date so the girls can sign up, girls and boys can sign up for the competition. And not to put the pressure on the council, but we do need to give some direction. And maybe it's not even tonight, but maybe before the holiday. Yeah, so.
I just don't want to make a decision. I mean, I realize that you guys need a date, but I feel like we're being rushed, and you have a lot of us here who are new councilmembers, who the direction was of the previous council, and unfortunately, these are decisions that were made two or three years ago that we talked about, that were going to be hard decisions for the groups, that they had to break even.
Right.
If we want to take a different direction now, I think we need some time to, like, talk about this as a group on which direction we want to take. Because if we say to the Garden City Figure Skating Club...
Then you have to do it for everyone.
We have to do it for everyone, and I don't know...
When's our first meeting, January thirteenth?
Thirteenth. Yes, sir.
January thirteenth, well, that still gives you guys two months.
No, they have to put this stuff out for them.
I, I know that's not enough time for the club.
You know, we have to get it out in the skating world, if you will. You know, the, our competition is going to be here, or it's going to be Melvinale. We have to secure the judges. We have to make our mind arrangements with them, so it's not really enough time for us.
Could I ask, Mayor, what is the twelve percent?
Yes.
What is it? I mean, dollar-wise?
The, the council-approved fee schedule has a number of fees for the entire city. In the recreation section, it has everything from a skate rental to an hourly ice rate for the ice arena. The last rate approved for the competition was twelve percent of their total taken. Now, keep in mind, at the time that was in the fee schedule, was, was prior to the council directive of the ice arena operating in black. Just, now I don't know how much we want to get into this.
How much, how much does twelve percent come to?
Twelve percent roughly over the last few years has ranged from twenty-two hundred to, I want to say, maybe twenty-seven hundred. And our ice schedule as it stands today, we will lose fifty-seven hundred dollars in revenue. That's how much we have on the books, fifty-seven. So we were even offering the club a discount of forty-five. So there was, there was a good effort to try to make this thing happen on, on the rink's behalf.
I'm still not comfortable making that decision tonight. We're just learning about it.
I understand.
Can we...
May I suggest that Mr. Plamon give you the information that, all of the information that he has available and spin it out, and if council needs to either call a special meeting or just advise us as to what the majority thinks, then we can go from there?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Is that satisfactory?
I think that's just fine, because personally, we have an ordinance on this.
Right.
Says we'll charge twelve percent. So, if I were left with this decision on my own, it's going to be twelve percent, because...
Well, I'd like to see us do something, but like I say, I can wait if, uh...
I think, I think Mr. Plamon can have a full report together in very short order, and then we can move from there.
If we need a special meeting.
At all the holidays, what do you guys want to call a special meeting?
Or we can just give you direction.
I don't think that there needs to be a special meeting, per se. I mean, you can have one if you... I mean, you can have one if you want. But if you just advise the city manager of what each of you have, if you respond to him, then he'll know what you want him to do, and there you go.
Which one to follow?
Are you guys good with that?
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Okay.
We'll get our report distributed to you as soon as it's available.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we'll see what we can do. Okay.
Continuing regarding Mr. Bakal's complaints, the handicap area right out there in front of City Hall is a little distressing to me regarding as far as snow removal goes. I didn't notice it unfortunately until I was walking over for the meeting. He's right. We didn't do a good job of clearing that. I'm sure Mr. Roney will be checking our cola between Cambridge and Warren tonight on his way home to evaluate that. I'm confident with that. I do wanna mention, we had our initial meeting with the DTE regarding our next streetlight LED campaign. That looks like that will be a goal for 2014, another couple hundred lights. I'll come back before city council will discuss it as soon as the flesh is out a little. I also had a meeting with, this is a new organization. It consists of members from the Center for Community Progress, the Community Economic Development Association, Michigan Municipal League, and the Michigan Community Resources. They have put together something called the Michigan Bacon Property Campaign, and I heard about it and reached out to them, and we're going to have a meeting. They have things like toolkits to help you promote vacant residences, vacant businesses in town. They have, obviously, a lot of people with a lot of money bring all their resources together to help us. So I'm looking forward to that first meeting, which unfortunately doesn't take place until January. I'd like to mention the council, the center of condolences along to the family of Gloria Akersaw. Gloria was one of the first civilian dispatchers with the Garden City Police Department. She passed away on Saturday night, and the families in our thoughts and prayers. I want to also mention to council, obviously, as we discussed, the review of our audit, the condition of the water department got a few people's attention. We are in preliminary conversations with Plant Moran. I'd like to bring them in to do a water rate study. This will be something different than what, they may have done for us in the past, they do do it for other communities, but takes a good, close look at the water rate. And quite frankly, if that study reveals that we're making too much money, we're able to turn around and change our water rates as soon as the results of that study are known. So we're looking forward to that, which hopefully will kick off in January, because nothing happens in December. I do wanna mention, as it was discussed, this increase that we saw in one of the graphs. We need to keep in mind that that graph took us up to a point where we had a change in policy. We had been planning on, I know it's got another name, Mr. Roney, but I call it the big ditch. We had been planning and salting away money, salting away money for the big ditch.
Retention pond.
Thank you. Put it in there. Hey, that's our rule. It's got a real name.
Yeah.
But we had been salting away money for that until as part of the budget process in mid-2013, we decided, no, we're going to stop doing that. So that's one of the things that affects that increase that you see. But we're going to study this and study it closely, because it does make you scratch your head when you look and see that graph that looks like a ski slope. I also want, I have to give a shout-out again to DPS. Actually, Mr. Bakal was the first complaint I've heard about the street cleaning by DPS. They were out there. This was an odd little storm. It was supposed to start at 9:00 on Friday, and we planned our initial attack at 2:00 in the morning, and when we were up at 2:00 in the morning, there wasn't a snowflake in sight. So that sort of screwed up the whole plan and the whole weekend, but our guys got out there and attacked it real well. And again, we're always very proud of DPS and the job they do. And by the way, I believe they handled two main breaks. I remember it was funny, in the middle of all this. So that was, that was exciting. I also...
Here it comes.
There was a charity event over the weekend. The guns versus hoses. The police department won. If you were keeping score, the police department won. This was really a well-played game. This was a good game. It was fun to watch. The final score, I believe, was 7 to 6. It was a nail-biter going all the way down to the end. And the community support that was out there, the firefighters that were out there, the police officers, it was really just heartbreaking. And the real winners are, of course, the students at the Burge, who may will take advantage of that. I don't know yet what the total amount of money collected was, but they're the real winners here. And while I'm very proud of this, and you'll probably only see it six or seven more times between now and next December, I'm proud of the job that everybody, everybody did out there. Tom Wenzel from the fire department, Sean Breen, Bruce Shigby from the police department, all worked very hard. The mayor paid for ice time. That was very nice. One thing I have to mention, just because it boggles my mind, you may have read in the paper that the police department, some of the officers, like this scruffy-looking guy, we have suspended the rule regarding beards for the month of December.
Don't let him talk.
So in order for an officer to be... That's a tenant's service tagline. In order for the officers to be able to participate, they had to each pitch in $20 per face. We, the hobo cops presented their money Saturday night. The check was for $1,000.
Yay!
There are 29 officers and a $20 fee. We're cops, we're not mathematicians. Very proud of them. That's all I have tonight.
Oh, that's great.
Thank you. Councilmember Kerwin, you have anything tonight?
Yes, I would like to thank the... What do you mean, tonight?
I'm the city manager.
Oh, okay. Thank the city manager, but actually, the chief of police. I had one lady that stopped me and a couple other people that called me on the condition of a house over on John Hawk, I think it was, and I haven't talked to you since, but thank you very kindly. It was unbelievable. And after I talked to Mr. Murray, a couple hours later, they were there working on, had dumpsters, and I'd never seen such a mess. It was terrible. But I appreciate you getting that cleaned up, and so do the neighbors, believe me.
And DPS deserves it.
DPS, yes. I can stop and talk to the guys. They did a very good job. Also, to Mr. Roney, you have to take care of the special citizens. So we need a little more salt over to Mr. Bakal's house. Everet, snow, sleets, ices, we need a little extra salt over to Mr. Bakal, and other than that. I think I'm all set, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Carr.
Just a couple of things. One, I'd like to mention the Garden City Historical Museum has a special holiday display out. If you haven't had a chance to get over there, it is truly amazing, the number of Santa Clauses they have. Also, King Cade, the artist, they have original ornaments that he made. It is truly an amazing thing to visit during the holidays. So the museum is open from 12 to 3 on Saturdays and Wednesdays. Admission is great. It's zero. So take your family, the kids, I went, and there were quite a few younger kids. They were enjoying it just as much as the senior citizens. So please take time to visit the museum this holiday season. Also, I'd like to thank Plant Moran. The report they do, it helps explain what has already happened, and that's important. But I really liked what they were talking about, some of the future, what's going to possibly happen. And as we start the budget process in a few weeks, some of that information will definitely be part of our discussion. So I have questions, and my eyeballs are like cross-eyed as I was going through the reports, but thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilmember King?
Yes, just a couple of things. Just wanna say, I had a great time at the seniors' party, at their Christmas party, and the only problem we had was Santa Claus. Other than that, it was a great night. It was good. Also, I've been meeting with some of the different department heads, and I'm really proud and happy to be a part of this, because they're fantastic. We've got a great crew working with us, and everything's kind of just going together. And Dan, nice job on that, getting that money for the lockers, for the grant, and also for working on more, doing a great job. We do have a new business in town. I'll throw a little promo out there for the Lucky Dog. It's a new business that's right off, well, practically across from us here, now closer to Kroger's, farther down. And it's setback, it's a large building. The gals that are running it are just absolutely wonderful, and if you have any reason to take a pet there, it's, I highly recommend it. No, you're not the pet. And, thank you. And they do board dogs, so I mean, especially during the season now, you know, instead of keeping the animals outside, if you're gonna be gone for a while, take advantage of it. They've got great rates, great people there, and worth of you. And that's about all I have to say.
Thank you. Ms. Bettis?
Two things. One is that, E.C., I like the Walking Dead, Sony Apocalypse look. And the other thing is, who is it again that's going to the Rose Bowl?
Mrs. Sersky, you have anything tonight?
Yes, mine too. Mine up. I would like to thank the Garden City Rotary and the Garden City Kiwanis Club for having me last week to their annual Christmas party. They had approximately 100 second graders from Memorial Elementary School that were there, and it was just an awesome, awesome event. Each group donates approximately $1,800 each to this charity and to this event, and they were able to wrap over 1,000 Christmas presents to give to these students. And it was just, like I said, just a wonderful event. We had a little girl sitting at our table, Allison and I did, who opened up a panda hat, and literally tears were in her eyes. She was so excited to have this panda hat on her head, and it was just, I mean, I came home that day just feeling the joy of Christmas. It was just great. So I just wanna thank those clubs again. And I just wanna give a reminder that the city offices are gonna be closed next Tuesday and Wednesday, the 24th, 25th, and also the 31st and the 1st of January, which is going to cause us a trash delay on December 25th and on Wednesday, January 1st. But trash will still continue to go that week. It will just be picked up on Saturday. And that's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you.
And Mayor, if I could just tag on to that, if you want to pay your tax bill and you'd like to pay it before the end of the year, feel free to throw it in the drop box. Feel free to mail it with a postmark that says before that date, and it will be credited as of that date. So, thank you, Mrs. Sersky.
Councilmember Squires?
Okay, first of all, congratulations to the police department on their win at the guns and hoses. It was a fun event. But it was a close game. It was very close, a very good game.
Very good game.
I would also like to remind the residents that during snowstorms like we just had recently, if you could please remember to remove your cars off the streets, it makes DPS's job a whole lot easier. And I know there were several left on our block, and it's not the same. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor Proton Lynch?
Yes. There's several groups out this holiday season just doing an outstanding job. The Kiwanis, the Rotary are two of the groups. The Goodfellows, standing on the corner, collecting the money and distributing it to needy families. But also, we have the United Needy Group and the Mayor's Committee for Underprivileged Children. And I know both times, Mrs. Squires was at both of those events, just packing boxes with food and presents and just doing an outstanding job. So there's a lot to be proud of in Garden City with all the groups out there, working, trying to help each other out. And at the game on Saturday, which was an outstanding hockey game, I have to give a shout-out to the Garden City Minimate's. Those little guys just impressed the heck out of me. They had such puck handling skills, and they were out there, and you would've thought that they were part of the official game of the evening, 'cause they were scoring left and right, and just really good skills. They know their stuff. And congratulations to the Garden City Hockey Club for teaching those skills to them. They're doing an outstanding job. And because this is our last meeting, I wanna wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a prosperous New Year in 2014. And that's all that I have.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanna follow up on it. You stole some of my thunder. I just wanna tell the residents what a great city we have. Just in the last few weeks, I had a business owner call me, wanted to take the seniors through Edward Heinz Park through the Light Fest. So he donated coffee and donuts. Dr. Klein from Garden City Schools participated, and we took the seniors from the Garden City Towers through the Light Fest, and they had a great time. The hockey game for autistic children, Goodfellows, no child without a Christmas out there collecting out, and the intersections in the cold, our DDA tree lighting, how about our downtown? Looks beautiful again. Brand-new 20-foot, 22-foot tree. The annual Christmas party for the second graders, for the seniors, by the Kiwanis and the Rotary groups. The Lions Club, I read in Observer, a young lady that collected eyeglasses for those in need. I mean, this is what kind of community we have. It just, Garden City's a great place, and the people, the volunteers that we have to make things happen in this city is just phenomenal, and I just wanna share that. And then, Allison, I'm surprised you didn't bring this up, that little note that you sent us, that we got word that the taxable value of Garden City property value, we weren't expecting, we were expecting it to be flat. It's up 4.1%. Our property values are going up.
So, and just to, and that is really good news for our community. It means that the recession that this area, this region has been experiencing is, and we did better than a lot of other cities did. So I remember Ms. King talking about the houses that were selling, and remember, this goes back about 18 months. So that's a good indicator of the future. Unfortunately, Proposal A caps us a little bit, and we'll have that cap at about, I don't know, 1.5%. But if you're buying a new house, that won't affect that. The people who get uncapped, those things won't affect that, and we're looking forward to it. Good things are happening, and we're moving forward. We're kind of getting out of that bad place and going into the good place.
Absolutely. That's what I was gonna say. I mean, we all hit rock bottom, all the communities in southeastern Michigan, and this is a sign that we're on our way back. Property values are on the uptrend, new businesses are opening, so the Garden City residents need to know that. So that's a positive thing for our city.
Thank you.
And that's all I have. At this time, I need a motion to go into a closed session.
Move.
For attorney's opinion. Move by...
Okay.
Kerwin?
Go Lions.
Supported by Councilmember Lynch. Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Kerwin.
Hi.
Councilmember Lynch.
Hi.
Councilmember Sersky.
Hi.
Councilmember McCarge.
Hi.
Councilmember Squires.
Hi.
Councilmember King.
Hi.
Mayor Walker.
All right, motion passes 7-0. At this time, we're gonna recess to go into closed...
Apparently, no one cares.
It's last weekend. I texted you, I sent you a basic...